Good evening, everybody. And welcome to the first meeting of the Health and Environment Policy Committee for this new school year. The meeting is taking place in Water Street in the Guildhall of Inverness. The time is 6:30pm. My name is Councilwoman Corin Thompson, and I am the Chairperson of this Coal Policy Committee. Please allow me to advise that the meeting is being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website. So if you are joining us at home this evening, welcome to you also. In addition, a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. I'm joined this evening by councillors Crumoeysen, Toquiper, Westwood, Williams, Walsh, Carron and Piersen. And I'd like to welcome particularly those new councillors who have just been elected at the New Business and it's their first committee meeting. I'd also like to thank councillor Williams and councillor Pierson for their continued service on the committee this year. I'd also like to thank the officers who are present with us this evening, Mr Botham, Mr Lincoln, Mr Robbins, and also our democratic services officer, Mr Cannon and Matthew, who just came to me for a moment. I believe that online we have Alex Ebo, our sustainability officer, who will support and ask for any needs his help. We have three papers to consider this evening, and once the papers have been introduced, I'm keen to ensure that all members have a chance to both ask questions and to take part in the debate after the questions. So please can I ask you that as members, you make sure that you keep your questions short and that your points are succinct? That way, we should be sure that everybody has a chance to ask the questions and to make the voice they want to. As usual, what you do is you raise your hand, and I will call on your intern to speak. And for the officers joining us virtually tonight, which are leaders only, Alex Ebo, please can I ask you to move your mind and turn your camera off until you're called off? And finally, can I please ensure that everyone has their mobile phones either switched off or at least turned to silence? So thank you, everybody, for being here. Most welcome, and we'll move straight on to the consecutive items of the agenda. Do we have any apologies for deputy members?
Thank you, Chair. No apologies for our supremacy. Don't members of person, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our first item is to appoint a Vice Chair for this new school year. Do I have any nominations for Vice Chair of this council?
Yes, you do. I'd like to nominate councillor Williams, right hand.
Thank you. Then the second councillor Williams?
This chair, I'll be pleased to second councillor Williams.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Shall I take that the councillor Williams has said that we duly elected as Vice Chair of this committee? Thank you, councillor, please. So the benefit, everybody listening at home, councillor Williams has just moved to the table to assist me, making sure I don't miss any hands when they raise after questions. Okay, do we have any declarations of interest this evening?
I've received none, Chair. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, councillor Moore. Just to clear my role as Hampshire County Councillor, Executive Member of the Environment at Hampshire.
Thank you very much. Okay. I don't have any chairperson's announcements as such, but I will make some comments before we look at your plan for the year. We've obviously all had minutes from the last meeting. Can I take that those minutes are agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed. Thank you. We now need to note the dates for future meetings. Obviously, we are now 6th of July, a firm meeting on 30th of September, then another on the 7th December, and then all the way through to the 2nd of March next year. Noted. Thank you. I don't believe there is any public participation tonight.
None, Chair, no.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so we will move on to the first item on the agenda, which is to note the work plan for this committee. And as I said, I do have a couple of points to make about this. I hope everyone's had a chance to have a look at the work plan. Before I take any comments, there are a couple of things. You'll note that in the past, we've often had an update on the carbon neutrality programme, sort of its entirety at this committee on a regular basis. What I ask for this year is for us to be able to look in subsequent meetings at a different element of the carbon neutrality plan on a thematic basis. So for example, in September, we'll be looking at transport-related policies, in March, energy generation-related policies, and in July, housing property-related policies. I'm hoping by looking thematically that this will allow us to look in more detail at those specific policies that bring the report forward, which will allow us to actually make the carbon reduction that we do need to do. In addition, for the September agenda, there is an additional agenda item, which would be a six-month review report on the Winchester Sports and Leisure Park. The impact it's having on sports and the wellbeing across the district, particularly amongst harder-to-reach groups, what plans the operators have to ensure that we increase this inclusivity. I don't know whether officers will be able to include a similar report in that for medicine.
I certainly think that, Chair, just by what I've come to be, I'm aware that cabinet have determined that a draw for the legislation said that it's just important that we don't end up duplicating it on this. But that's the same report we've got for whatever, but I'll confirm that on the subject of the legislation given at the time. But yeah, if we're doing the legislation, then there is one that would be.
Great. I think it's important for this committee to have a chance to look at the impact that sports measures actually is having on the community, and I have already spoken to councillor about that, so thank you, Stephen. I also was approached by, sorry, the other point I wanted to make was that councillor Pierson had written to me on behalf of the Conservative Members of this Committee to ask that we bring a paper to the committee on the broader issue of inequality across the district. His particular concern is around our monitoring of the small particular matter, the M25 in the city, as well as in certain market towns. Again, I have spoken to councillor Murphy about that, as a climate member, sorry, a cabinet member for the Climate Engineering Agency, and also with Mr Ingram, who is our officer leader. And they are considering ways that we can bring that paper forward. So that has also been done. Are there any other points that anybody would like to raise about the work plan, or are we happy to approve it? Can you see the hands?
Let's see the hands.
Therefore, can I also?
If we take it, there will be a paper about ecology can be formed this year.
So I'm waiting for councillor Murphy and Mr Ingram to come back to me with when, or back to the chamber.
As I said, my notice too, in the light of what we pretty sure is going to be Environment Bill and the Clean Air Bill, about equality, concentrating on particulates. First of all, I question, I don't think we actually measure them at Inverness. It's a big number, and I fear we should get a rate of how we're going to deal with that.
As I said to you, councillor Pierson, I'm concerned about this as you are, and I know I was a committee member of this very committee two years ago, it's something I was raising. I also know that councillor Murphy may want to add something, but she's equally concerned. And it is interesting to note that in the recent case of the death of the nine-year-old, Ella, Adu Kazi Deborah, I apologize if I've said that wrong, that the coroner noted that there is no safe limit for air pollution in the air. So we know how important it is, but councillor Murphy, would you like to comment at all?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And yeah, we're very concerned about particulates, and we do actually measure them at the moment, but we will be extending the number of monitors we have. And we are bringing up to the paper this committee each year.
I think that is important, particularly as coroners are beginning to comment on air quality and the impact on people's death. At present, we're only talking about the statistical 40,000. Now we're getting people saying that air quality is a conducive factor. That is the key phrase, and I think we should take that, or at least prepare to take it. I understand we can't do it overnight financially or indeed equipment wise, but it is certainly something I fear this council should take advantage of.
Thank you, councillor Pierson, and thank you councillor Murphy for confirming that we are doing that, so we will definitely add it to the work plan we need to call at the appropriate point. Are we happy therefore to read the work plan? Sorry, councillor Crumoeysen?
Yes, sorry about that. And this is a question that might reveal my naivety about these proceedings, but the work plan looks great as far as I'm concerned. But I have a question really around, is it possible to review this at each session and potentially request changes for the future? Or is this the work plan for the whole year? You know, it is what it is for the whole year.
So the work plan we definitely would review. For example, I note that the Community Wellbeing Strategy is due to come back to this committee in draft form at the March meeting. That currently isn't on this work plan, so certainly it will be reviewed. What we have to be conscious of though, is there is only so much this committee can get through properly in the long term, and also officers, we want them to spend their time doing work as opposed to simply writing every report since the committee, so there's a balance here. Would you add anything to that, Stephen?
I'll be again the point about the impact on officers, but no, the work plan will be on every agenda. It would be good practice to review that and reschedule reports if that's required, yeah.
Okay, so are we happy with the work plan? Can I take it that that's agreed? Yes, thank you very much, everybody. So moving on to our first, our second item on the agenda, the Community Wellbeing Strategy. I'm welcoming this paper this evening, and I would ask all members on the committee to note the specific points that we as a committee are being asked to comment on in the recommendations, which is on page 14 of the report. So would either councillor Clear, as a cabinet member of the Committee on Wellbeing, or Mr Lincoln like to introduce the paper for us, or both?
Councillor Clear, thank you. Thank you, and good evening, Chair, and fellow councillors and officers. We are very pleased to be able to present this report to you this evening. A report regarding community and wellbeing strategy for the district that was presented to this committee in March 2020, as the report states. But when the work was about to commence, COVID-19 meant our time was needed in helping to support communities through this difficult and worrying time. In doing so though, we have learnt a great deal by being very active and working even closer with communities and businesses all over the district. The vital role of the community well played during COVID was absolutely fantastic, and I do know that in my village of Wickham, everybody came together and helped each other. It was absolutely fantastic. It was vital, and I know all communities have done it. It's not just about market towns and villages, it's about the city and all communities, because without our communities coming together and working together, we'd be in a very sorry state. So, and I must say that when I was offered this portfolio, I was absolutely delighted. But I'm going to hand over now to Steve Lincoln, who I'm sure he would like to add a few things. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Clear, thank you, Chair. So as councillor Clear mentioned, amongst all the difficulty of the COVID-19 pandemic, the response to it has demonstrated the care and support in the resilient nature of our communities. This is a huge strength of Winchester District, and it's vital to sustain wellbeing of those people who live here. The report summarizes some of the evidence that tells us what communities need to thrive or flourish, as we use in the report. And experience shows that we're clearly starting from a position of strength. But the council's got a key role in supporting our communities through difficult times, unlocking their potential, ensuring that no one gets left behind. This strategy should aim to ensure that that's the case. Collaboration with a wide range of partner agencies is essential to make the most of our limited resources and brings with it great experience and a range of perspectives. This collaboration has always happened, but the COVID-19 response seemed to refocus efforts and really help highlight common aims and shared objectives that we and our partners have. Parish Town Councils are central to this collaboration, as described in the report, and the strategy will aim to reinforce the ways in which the council can work alongside them. Conversely, Winchester itself, the vision for Winchester recently published, sets out how people power up and be central to the future. Different communities may need different solutions, but the principles need to be fair and consistent. The proposal is for this strategy to take its lead from existing strong evidence, to evolve alongside the vision for Winchester and local plan, to respond to the needs of communities as they emerge from a challenging year. The time scale proposed is one which allows communities to be involved in the development of the strategy, but avoids further lengthy and potentially unnecessary consultation and the risk of consultation fatigue that comes with it. Importantly, it talks about time scale that is achievable, given the competing demands on officers that have already been mentioned. The strategy that follows won't provide solutions to all of our community's challenges, but it should help them to make better, to be better placed to respond to those challenges and play a greater part in finding the solutions. So in conclusion, the committee's asked this evening to note the evidence we already have and the suggested time scale for the work, but also to comment on the approach set out in the report. In particular, the importance of consistent and equitable principles as the basis for our support for communities, the aspiration to see all communities display their characteristics from a flourishing community, prioritising grant support on activity that supports those who are most affected by inequality and disadvantage, and how the community response to the COVID pandemic should and could inform the emergency strategy. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Chair, and thank you, Steve, for that introduction. So we have the opportunity for any members of the committee to ask questions on the strategy. Who would like to start us off? Councillor Toquiper, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. I really do welcome this report and the proposed strategy. One of the most uplifting things, I think, in the past 18 months is being the community response to the pandemic. And so it's really great that we are doing something to harness and retain that community spirit and ultimately enhance it and take it forward. You know, even from, you look at sort of the community responses from organic and growing groups like mutual aid register, a Facebook group, a handful of people, a group of 3,000 members, to established community groups and charities like Unit 12, Soehanra, Regent's Register, that this goes on. Really importantly, engage all of those organisations in this strategy. And on that, my question is really, one of the things I think is quite important here, in order to ensure that we do get views from across the district, is to ensure that we have an effective mechanism to engage those groups. And so what I want to know is whether the possibility of a forum akin to the one that we are proposing later in the Climate Change Agency is suitable for this strategy, mainly to be acting as an oversight organisation for the strategy, and also a, an expert panel provider of input to how we deliver it. Because it's those community groups and charities that are up front line, cold facing community action, and it's important we have the council acting as a coordinating organisation for those problems. So that's my question, whether it would be possible to set one of those up?
Thank you, councillor Toquiper. The same thing as you want to try and answer that? Or refer to councillor Clear?
I certainly have a go, councillor Clear. I'm certainly absolutely honest.
I was just going to say that I don't see any reason why not. We can work with all kinds of stakeholders, parish councils, community centres, everything, but I let Steve speak as well.
That's great, because that was pretty much going to be my response as well. So absolutely, it could happen. I think what we need to have a think about would be whereabouts in the process that we set out in the report that we fit. There's kind of two stages where I envisage just engaging, one right at the start in a bit of a light touch kind of self-assessment type of exercise in terms of getting some of our communities to give us a bit of judgment as to where they feel they are on that scale of what's a flagship beauty. But then a more full kind of consultation process once we develop the draft strategy. So I guess it could fit in either place. It'd be something for us to go away and just have a little think about where we fit most appropriately, and also where that could still fit with the time scale and allow us to come back to this committee and obviously to cabinet where necessary. The other thing we obviously need to think about would be how we make a sort of representative but manageable group of people. I'm sure it's doable. So, and we can certainly think some thoughts of that, so absolutely.
So thank you, Chris Lykan, and thank you, councillor Clear. I also just wanted to come out of one of the lines that really struck me on the paper, is when you said it's important that the strategies speak to the communities. So I think they're important as we go through visually helping with that and stuff. Sorry, councillor Pierson.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, so it's, it's welcome paper, but I think we've got to admit the council, even with the emergency planning system that was quite in place, county-led, but obviously we are part of that emergency planning and has to do a very great deal of caution. What was noticeable, certainly as far as the Irish were concerned, is how neighbours, volunteer groups within the villages and the parish councils had to step forward very, very quickly. Certainly, as far as parish councils, they're not quite used to doing that, but they took it up very, very quickly. And I think a great deal of praise should go to them. Similarly, the churches, and I say that in plural, did a great deal of work organising voluntary groups that weren't formal, but getting community, local community, I'm talking about a street length type of community or a housing estate type of community, getting them together. This is the first time our emergency planning system has had a pandemic to deal with. And the irony was, there was a trial back in 2016, and I regret to say this, but I could see in my own village, I couldn't see any impact that we actually learnt anything from that pandemic trial back in 2016. And this is why everybody was doing a lot of capture, and I'm going to say it, including ourselves and the City Council. I don't think any of us quite answered space how severe it was going to be. A lot in the communities forced, and they're still fighting, and we're going to accept it actually exists, but of course it did. But I've said in the village, and I'm pretty sure it commences within Winchester, made very sure through the neighbours that there weren't any gaps left. You're ranging from picking up prescriptions to increasing donations to food banks, to creating the volunteer groups, to looking for guidance through the City Council where to get help and how the money from the government will be shrouded through to not just parish councils, but not City Council, but also parish councils and the volunteer groups. And there was a bit of, sorry, Richard, there was a bit of slum was there, and I can't say that I obviously agree with the decision, but we got there.
Councillor Pierson, is this easy to question?
I'm not concerned about that, I'll send them off.
So was there a question on that?
I mean, what we've asked a question as well, I thought we were into today.
No, we are, we are right.
I'm saying because what Steve suffers, we talk. The question is, do you not agree churches and the Irish councils were very quick to step forward to organise things at the village level?
So I think that one of the things this paper actually does is acknowledge that very much. It also points to, if I may, Mr Lykan, it also points to the fact that we recognise through the response to the COVID pandemic that not all the community groups, not all parishes were as one equipped or as one aiming to respond as quickly as others. So we had some that were streaks ahead. I have to think of Bishop's Wharton, the response was very fast. We have other areas where it was hard for them to get things together. So I think one of the things you want to do in the strategy, Mr Lykan, is to address that present equality between the people who are enabled to respond to community needs. Would you like to add anything, councillor Clear? You had to go on, but.
I was just going to, all I was going to add was, as I released a report, councillor Pierson said in his debate, and the churches as well, which I did overlook when I started speaking, they were absolutely fantastic, and it is still going on, still going on. Thank you.
Steve, did you want to add anything?
Only really to echo what you've said already. It's absolutely right, the response from communities themselves was incredible. It provided support that there's no way we as a council could have provided as quickly, as responsively, and in the way that they understand the needs and requirements of the people who live there, which is, I guess, I think, I think that whole pandemic has really been a really good representation of everything that this paper, this strategy is trying to, trying to achieve. Those issues of the sort of the deficit, the sort of participative deficit in some of these communities and their ability to respond and react has always been there. And I suspect that the communities who struggle to respond to COVID are some of the ones who we maybe have struggled to respond to other issues in the past as well. This has helped to kind of really crystallise and demonstrate that. And so, yeah, there's certainly, I think what we'd like to do is make sure we try and reduce that deficit and focus our efforts where they're most needed.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. And again, I note at the beginning of the paper, you explicitly say that you want to learn from us post the pandemic. So Lord forbid should we find ourselves here again, and we will respond as quickly as we can. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Carron.
Thank you very much. There we go, new to this technology. Yeah, again, a really fantastic report, very much welcome. It was great to obviously see that we're going to learn from what's happened with COVID over the last year and a half. But is the strategy also going to be taking into account the effects of COVID on a prolonged period, obviously, you know, with the fact that restrictions are starting to ease? I watched the programme the other day, and it showed images of that lockdown at the very start, and that already seems so long ago that the roads were empty. I know it's a very easy trap to fall into, that we get back to normality and we forget the effects and everything. We did all that hard work. You know, I've seen already with friends and colleagues that there are lots of hidden effects to COVID long term, just like long COVID, but with mental health and things going forward. Is that going to also be part of the strategy, that there is going to be a section of a continued effort towards COVID, as well as learning from those lessons? But that support continues to those that will be affected from that on a longer term basis?
Yeah, I think, I think it definitely should do. I think, you know, there are short term and long term impacts. Some of it relates to COVID, some of it relates to other demographic issues, other disadvantage, other inequality. So absolutely, I think this needs to be a strategy that sets out some principles which apply now, but really will apply into the future once COVID is beyond gone.
Sorry, councillor Weston, Westwood even.
Thank you, Chair. I was so welcome with this report, it's a great initiative and it's great that we're taking it forward. And from my perspective, it was so great, the way my community pulled together at the beginning of this pandemic. But what I will say is that whilst I know more neighbours now than I ever did before, we support each other, some of that support is slowly drifting away. And in, in section 2.1, you, you say that it's important to capture the positive feelings that outcomes resulted from the pandemic. And I also noted your timetable, you talked about how to deliver the strategy and so on. Could you just comment on how we can capture those positive feelings and not wait to lose too many and actually try and take the good things that we see, the non-controversial things that we see, and try to spread those out as soon as we're done?
Thank you, Steve.
I think that works already happening, already ongoing. Obviously, this strategy sets, kind of formalises much of what we've been doing for the last 12 months and, and will be on that to fair. So, so this is a work which would wait until the strategy's approved. I think what the strategy will do, we'll, we'll be learning from it as we go in. Obviously, we, we're getting informed feedback from, from the committee tonight, we'll be speaking with our various stakeholders, we've been doing that for the last 12 months specifically around Covid and how we respond to that. But we've also been doing that previous to that as well. So I think we're trying to learn all the time. I think there's a danger already, which applies to this work and the, the positive kind of community element, and probably applies a little bit to some of the climate stuff, which we're going to talk about later, where I almost worry a bit, we've already missed some of the positive learning, because, you know, I agree with you that we very quickly revert back to the way we've always done things, even if we maybe take the opportunity to reflect on that. And, and even though some of our behaviours may have reverted back, we can possibly just capture and remind ourselves of some of those positive things and, and make sure they're not lost completely. So that definitely needs to be part of this work. I think it's part of the work that, as I say, is happening on an ongoing basis. Some of the themes over the last 12 months, there was some of the work tied in with the Mayor's Awards that were very much focused around Covid and some of the positive themes and celebrating and recognising those people. And there's more of that that we need to do as well. So, yeah, I agree completely.
Thank you. Councilor Tiptick, I believe, has a second question.
I have a question from Councilor Pearson, rather than one from Councilor Pearson.
I'm not quite sure whose hand is up first.
I think it might be Councilor Pearson.
I'm very happy to defer.
Councilor Pearson, it looks like you're.
If you're willing to do it, I'll just.
No, I believe it's a silly question, I'm trying to.
I do have a question, sorry, Councilor Pearson. So, no, no, my question was just drilling down a little bit. In paragraph 2.13 about grant support being another way in which councils build capacity of communities, and I think one of the ways in which the councils showed real agility effectiveness during the pandemic was the swift grant support it gave to community organisations. And City Council really deserves all the praise on that, because there's a lot of great dialogue between community groups and charities that were sort of calling out for help and the council being there, still can provide it. Going forward, I think one of the sort of issues that's been raised with me is whether the, the grant support structures are there and placed in the council, but whether there needs to be a bit more focus on advice to community organisations, charities about how best to access grants. There's a lot of expertise in the council about grant applications, what, what, what a good application looks like. And that sort of, sort of expertise can be a real benefit to particularly everyone at community groups that sort of starts now. And I think the council has a part to play to be able to help organisations in that process. So the question is really, is there scope to include some of the vision around grant, the grant giving knowledge and experience dissemination?
Just before you answer, Steve, I know with crowdfunding platform that we do offer training support, don't we, to a range of community groups, taking into that before they apply. Is this something separate or clearly connected in that?
I think it certainly could be connected. Crowdfunding, I think we see now as, if you like, one of the tools at our disposal in terms of, in terms of our ways to support communities. There's some specific support that's available around crowdfunding, potential applicants to crowdfunding, because it's a, it's a relatively easy way of doing things, it's something that a lot of people won't experience having to do. And, and the, the organisation who we contracted to run the crowdfunding platform for us was very clear that from their experience, people who were given a bit of advice and helping hand, had to almost run the campaign, were the most successful. So that's why we included that as part of the contract. So that continues and that is still there. And there's a number of those, there's about three of those sessions, I think, that happen each year. So that's certainly something that we continue to push. I, I very much felt that crowdfunding was going to be one of the things that would be a real help to organisations coming out of, of, of the, the sort of the Covid pandemic. Just as an example, Theatre ran an amazingly effective campaign and raised a lot of money to really help them through the difficult times. Not many other organisations in my mind have come forward to, to try and use it in that way. So it's something we continue to try and push. And now, now that a lot of organisations unfortunately almost offbored, Jim, for a period, and, and a lot who would have looked to raise funding for certain activities didn't want to because they didn't really know what the future was going to look like for them. They didn't know what the future of their organisation, they didn't quite know what their clients and customers and members were going to be looking for from them. So I'm, I'm really hopeful that in the coming period that that activity will start again. In terms of the advice and support, we do commission an organisation called Community First, who is there to provide that kind of support and advice to people. Interestingly though, that, that contract comes to an end at the end of this calendar year. So one of the things we're going to have to do in over the coming months is having a look at what sort of support and advice we need for organisations going forward. We can definitely take something from this exercise and the, the engagement we have with organisations. I think we're probably going to want to do some separate consultation with some of our voluntary sector organisations as well about the very specific support that they want. And it might be that the future of that contract looks a little bit different, but absolutely really good to get that feedback. And it's certainly something we can build in here, because I think that funding is a really key element in how we empower the capacity of that communities.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you for raising the point, Councilor Tiptick, but I know speaking to one particular community organisation, that they simply didn't apply for any of the funding that was available because they didn't feel they had skills to do that. So, you know, that, that is a shame. One of the recommendations that we specifically want to comment on was the prioritising grant support to actively support those people most affected by inequality and disadvantage. The question I know, if I may, is, do we actually have a current analysis of our grant funding and how it's spread across different, you know, geographical spread and geographic spread type of activity group? In the sense that if we're saying we want to prioritise it, is it something we're currently doing? Was there definitely a shift needed?
I think maybe a small shift. We definitely have information on the geographical spread of the support. That was included as part of the, the last time that the three year kind of core grant funding was allocated. And we brought a report to Cabinet, I think it was now, maybe September, last year, which, which updated in terms of some of that information, some of the outcomes. So geographically we have it. We also have a fairly high level analysis of whether we're supporting older people, younger people, that, that kind of level. I'm sure we could drill down a little bit more, and if we really wanted to get into some of the number of disadvantage and inequality, we probably need to drill down a little bit more, but I'm sure we could do that. The, the main reason that it was included as one of the, the things was to look at in the strategy is, is, you know, we're all aware that the council will face financial challenges, we'll be coming to the next three year round of allocations early next calendar year, and I suspect there'll be pressure on the grant budget and we'll have to look and make some quite hard decisions about how we allocate it to get the best value and support for people who need it the most. So the point, I think there was really to just get a sense of if members are supportive that when pushed onto each other, if we have to make some hard decisions, that's one of the key things we should look to make, to base our decisions on.
Thank you. Councilor Tiptick. Sorry, Councilor Pearson, because I've turned my head to listen to Steve.
No, it was just coming back to the grants as well, but Steve practically recovered it very well. Apart from Community First, in other organisations, we are in collaboration with parish councils and the voluntary sector, so we're with them all the time and talking and communicating. It will continue to be like that as well. Thank you.
And just before we move into debate, Councilor, could you have any specific questions that you wanted to ask?
Thank you, Chair, for asking. I think it was a really interesting paper, so well done, Steve. I just wondered, I was wondering, did you make some connection during the Covid crisis with groups that you had not reached before, and whether you will continue that partnership with?
Yeah, absolutely, both in terms of, if you like, some of the agencies who are out there, who we probably should have been working much closer with, but for whatever reason, we just haven't. It's already been mentioned about the churches, and actually, we made some really strong ones with the churches, which is the diocese, we worked really closely with them, we're continuing to meet with. And, and I think probably we, we have a shared, better understanding now of what each other's doing, and actually how similar some, what some of our objectives are in terms of what we're trying to achieve. But also in terms of the actual organisations and groups out there, absolutely. I think we just mutually, as you already mentioned, obviously, we didn't work with them much because they didn't exist, they, they came about in a very, very quick space of time. It was, it's a really interesting exercise in our thinking. We're very much, and I think it's a traditional local authority way of thinking, we very much, we know who we know, we trust who we know. There happens to be a bit of, a bit of a change nexus there, a bit of a culture shift in, in a group of people who we didn't know, who we couldn't really vouch for, but who we knew offered to do a really valuable thing on a significant scale in an area where it was really, and they become a really important part of the fabric of Winchester, and I think they will continue to be that. So there was lots of similar activity across some of the other areas. We were maybe a step removed from in some parts of the district where such a huge district, we very much had to rely on that kind of network, and that's where the parish town councils came in really strongly. And actually, a lot of those very local groups and that local activity, they moved with contacts, and we, we weren't directly involved, but we're aware now of the huge network that's out there, which we maybe weren't aware of before.
Thank you, Steve. If we are ready to move into debate on this paper, can I ask you, when we're going into debate, whether we can specifically look at those issues that we have been asked to look at? So for example, you know, are we, are we sort of content that the focus should be on ensuring that all communities display characteristics of a flagship community, which is detailed under section 2.8, as identified by the research done by Winchester University? The importance of consistent ethical principles on the basis of all support communities, we've already mentioned prioritising the grant support to the most affected by inequality and disadvantage. And so I think we have already suggested we agree with this, that the pandemic, the strategy takes into account the learning points from the local community response to the Covid pandemic. And so if we're going to move into debate, I think, Councilor Pearson, you're ready to go.
Time limit, remind myself. Yes, I mean, upon context of everything that we've said, and I think the focus of the questions have revealed a lot of what we've learned, and it's, that's the important thing, Steve, yourself has just said this, with scanning networks we didn't know existed. I think it goes back down to the emergency planning gap, kind of call it. The gold was there, silver was there, but bronze wasn't. It took us all by surprise, and largely because the parishes had never been asked to do this sort of thing. So there was a lot of groping around, what do we do, what do we do? And they were brought forward by a number of volunteers, certainly that I'm aware of, Watford Chase, the former Hamilton, where volunteers came forward and basically pushed parish councils into a degree of coordination. And that, and when it came down to the grounds, as we had questions about, that was felt, I think, by the City Council and perhaps County Council as well. Because the parish councils and the ward members knew what direction to push the questions to get this sort of information. There were gaps, of course there were gaps, because we were all playing a new game, you know, at any level, playing a new game. I remember one of the things I learnt in emergency planning college was that there are some emergency events that don't just happen here and then be gone in three or four days. There are some that take years. And I think one example, if I may dwell slightly about this, it is relevant, was where a builder pierced a gas main. And we were posed the question, how long would it take to clear everything up? And anybody in there, some were gold members, some were silver members, and myself, I guess, peripheral silver member, I think I would have been, I was doing what Andrew is doing now, we said, oh, about a week. In actual fact, the answer was five years. Now, that is something I don't think yet we've realised about Covid. This is not just going to disappear on the 19th of this month, it is going on, which means that the parish councils, particularly, and then voluntary groups have got to stay active. And yes, the parish is saying, we all have to take our responsibility, of course we do, we always have had. But it is something that nears channeling, Steve said this, to keep these networks alive, some of which, that's what I said, didn't exist before this, they reform very, very quickly. And I think that is a crucial thing. If you're going to learn anything, if you're going to talk the theory that the universities come up with, bring that to practical reality, it pretty well is. It's just a language, it's used today, you've got to think about this. Who's the more I've had at Councilor Pearson years? What, who's this paper designed for? Because I suppose to understand the council's speak, even though I've been in the council for a number of years, perhaps might say too long. But can you see what I'm getting at? That gap of voluntary activity and requirement to the parish, parish councils, they did things they'd never been asked to do before, because that's not within their brief. But it is now, but it wasn't. We're talking about open spaces, walking, of this sort of thing, a recreation. Suddenly, they got emergency planning by excellence. And I think that has got to be fostered when you're talking about market towns, you're talking about small villages, you're talking about the communities within Winchester itself. We really must not let that ball be dropped.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Pearson. I would certainly say that during the pandemic, in my role as the cabinet member at the time, the partnership meetings that we had with parish councils or market towns were vitally important in terms of our economic response, but certainly the community response as well. I do apologise, I'm never in debate, but one of the questions I meant to ask was, you talk about strategy, is it a five year strategy, a two year strategy? The report doesn't actually say, it just says a strategy.
That's a very good question. I'm not sure I've, I've actually given much thought to that myself. That's probably something we need to give some thought about as, as we engage with our, our people and work out how, isn't it? Yeah, no, I, I obviously know that you asked that right now, but I will make sure that's something we turn our mind to.
If perhaps you could give a, give a response at some point to the Q and A, that would be fantastic. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to, sorry, would like to debate? Councilor Tiptick, I believe, that's a hand.
Yeah, just picking up on some of the things that Councilor Pearson says, obviously, for what he says. I mean, the question is, how do we keep the networks alive and described? And we mentioned Winchester Mutual Aid, there's a group of 3,000 people who signed up to a Facebook page essentially, and there's, I mean, I was one of the administrators on the group, and there's different levels of interaction you have from members on that group. But at any given time, there's several hundred people, particularly at the beginning of the pandemic, who were doing things in their local communities. And then what happened is, is the group was very, very successful in doing some very direct neighbourhood, neighbourhood by neighbourhood based support for people in those early months, and the councils supported them a lot, and the community groups supported them a lot. Then what seemed to happen was there was a sort of, an evolution of very local WhatsApp groups, where, and I suspect, you know, WhatsApp is a social media platform, which has proved a very effective communication to all the monthly communities. And so I suppose the challenge And so I suppose the challenge is, you know, how do you engage people who are willing to volunteer when required to, but as the pandemic subsides and things become more manageable, how do you harness that spirit of people being willing to volunteer for the future? And especially, I know this is a debate for a reason, I don't have an answer to that question, but I think Councillor Pearson, in his, has identified a real issue there that we need to sort of see if you can, as a council, look to address. I suspect one of the mechanisms is again, sort of a forum of community groups, and trying to include key volunteer groups within that, and ensuring that, I noticed that the councils are stepping up its role around obtaining communications, officer's support, things like that, and looking at how we can maybe harness the role within the councils on the communication level to engage volunteers, so.
I think the point's well made, but I suppose one of the issues that we have as a city council is that, you know, how big of a steering group then have to be? And maybe it speaks to what Councillor Pearson was coming to on, about how we enable the parishes perhaps, or the town councils, to actually do some of that work for us, because they're much more local, much more closer to those community groups. And again, the churches and other community groups that maybe have more contacts into those small groups, and then to use that as a pyramid to feed information up, but also feed information down. So I think that, you know, one of what she made in the strategy is, we need to be enabling, we can't do everything. And I think that maybe that's something that we need to consider. It would be difficult to learn with WhatsApp groups, might have to contact them, I have multiple WhatsApp groups. In our WhatsApp group, my street biggest news at the moment is there's a tortoise that keeps going rogue. So the community spends its time looking for the tortoise. I think Chris, you're on the same WhatsApp group. Okay, so Councillor Kean, what do you want to answer to me?
Yeah, it matches a bit like a Councillor Tiptick Cooper, it's kind of one of these thoughts, I guess it's more for debate rather than a question I know to be asked to, but I think when we're looking at a one-point CLC, prioritising that support for sports activities for those affected by inequality and disadvantage. I think one of the things that I noticed in lockdown, I did some volunteering with a few food banks, was the dependency that so many people in our community have on those food banks, which was quite staggering. So I guess it's easy to presume that, you know, Winchester is an affluent area and actually, not many people need food banks, but the Meereagh Valley Food Bank, who are currently based in Bishop's Wharf, and did a fantastic job. And when speaking with those, the vast number of families that were really dependent on that support was incredible. I'm not saying incredible, it's not the right word, it's just astonishing, really, that many people were in that much need of support. I guess it's something with this strategy is, these organisations like food banks, for example, we want those to be a stepping stone, not something that people become dependent on. Is that something, I guess, I guess it's a debate rather than anything, is how we enable those organisations to be a stepping stone and not to become a dependency for those people that we see, so we can really help them go forward.
Thank you, Councillor Kean. And I don't know whether Stanley might want to comment on the new community pantries, which are a slightly different concept to a food bank, which show allowing people to have more agency around food choices. I hope to comment some.
That's exactly what I was going to say. Yeah, the food pantries are exactly that, and Councillor Cooper will know this well, because one was basically Unit 12. So, you know, they're an perfect example of that, where the food banks are, if you like, your crisis point, people who have no other option, nowhere to turn. And the pantries have really kind of emerged as an idea, which kind of fills the gap and helps people transition from that into a more, I suppose, more mainstream shopping experience and food experience. So it starts to support them, but give them some independence in addressing the deal with some of those issues. So I guess it's exactly the kind of principle I think the strategy is about, which is about focusing on disadvantages, but helping our communities to help themselves, which is exactly what the pantries are doing, you know, so it's not us doing it, it's us enabling people through our support, our advice, networking, bringing them into contact with other people who are doing stuff that's really good. So yeah, perfect example of what I guess what we hope to achieve.
And please, Councillor Warwick?
Yes, we've got Warwick, Westwood, and then Councillor Cleo.
Okay, so you're just, I'm just going to say that time is moving on, so we'll go through this loop, and then we'll have the new ones next.
Yeah, just really quickly, Chair, just a bit of a debate, looking at the prioritising grant supports. And just as slightly external to the council during the managing the Covid period, what I did notice, normally you associate grants with those who shout loudly, significant amount of red tape. And actually, I would say from a Covid perspective, that didn't happen. So my feedback certainly, and reflecting on Winchester City Council, and I guess down to you guys, was that the grants were easy to apply for and they were paid promptly, which is kind of unusual, but it's a really nice thing to hear. And then just reflecting on Councillor Pearson, so as a member of a parish council, possibly at the time, I wrote the emergency plan for them, and I bet hardly any of them opened their emergency plans, because Covid didn't fit into that normal cascade of phoning. You always imagine something, an emergency, emergency, something happening very promptly, aeroplane crashed, train crashed, that sort of thing. And I suspect that planning process didn't fit the Covid pandemic picture. I don't know, that would be interesting.
Quite unique, though.
Thank you. Councillor Warwick?
Councillor Westwood. Thank you, Chair. Just to spin the debate the other way around. I was well aware, when I was down there talking to people, that there were a lot of lonely people out there. So just looking at the, instead of the organisations gathering, let's make sure that we don't miss the residents, the customers, the people who are upwards. And as an example, I called many doors around to May and so on. And I got a lot of feedback of what elderly people who were cut off from the community, and yes, they knew their neighbours, they just wanted to talk, they were lonely. And we need to bring that into our equation. A great example is that someone contacted me because they couldn't receive their milk anymore. And they couldn't receive it because they couldn't use the internet. And the movement would only deliver milk if they could order off the internet and pay over the internet. So let's make sure we don't miss the lonely people and people who did not need to quite reach properly.
I think that's a point, well made. Can we talk about inequality? We may need to look carefully at what we mean by inequality, because if unequal access to the internet or consumption and a cashless society is going to be another issue for a lot of people. And Councillor Cleo, did you want to add anything specific?
Oh, just very quickly, it was to do with the food pantries, because I know you in 12 were doing jolly well. And then a food pantry arrived in Wickham Community Centre, and it was an absolute joy. It's helped several families, several people, so we're jolly pleased, it's still going. But with the lonely people as well, we still have our phone lines going in Wickham, I must admit. And people are still ringing. I'm one of the contacts to say, if you're out and about, could you pick up this? Could you come and help me with that? So I think we will continue for as long as we need to. And I don't want you to think that this is just a piece of paper, we're not going to do any action when we go away. Thank you for speaking, but we're ignoring, we won't. And I must sing Steve's praises as well, because he's put this together and I've foremarched. And thank you for listening and your comments tonight. And Councillor Pearson, well done, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Cleo. So if we're happy, I would just like to thank Steve and the officers in your team that helped put this together, and thank Councillor Cleo as the cabinet member for governing communities. There is no doubt that this is going to be an important strategy going forward. And there have been lots of comments here today, which I think, I hope, have helped people actually develop that strategy. We will look forward to seeing the draft coming back to the committee in March. And thank you, everybody, for both your questions and your comments on this item. So we're doing well. It's seven thirty. Right, we will move on to item three on the agenda, which is the Carbon Neutrality Action Plan for 2020. This is a hefty paper, and it contains a great deal of information. So even before we start, I want to thank all the officers who've been involved in putting this together, because it's obvious there's a huge amount of work behind the paper. Again, the committee are being asked specifically to consider and comment on the temporary actions of identity quality point nine, as well as on what's being proposed in the open forum. Just bringing your attention to that at this stage, so that as we go through the questions and debate, we may should make up those things specifically. So either Councillor Murphy or, this is almost like two issues paper, Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Chair. I'm very pleased to bring this report to the policy committee today, and I declare your thanks to the office for all your hard work on this. Since declaring the climate emergency back in June 2019, we have made it the heart of all we do as a council. And it's no more of an emergency than ever. Just in the last week, we've seen news headlines about a heat dove in Canada, getting rise to temperatures of 47 degrees. Last Tuesday, more than 34 people died in Vancouver alone. We've also seen photos of seas on fire, with a rupture in an undersea gas pipeline in the Gulf of Mexico, sending flames to the surface of the sea, and an explosion in the Caspian Sea, sending enormous combs of flames shooting up into the skies. Although our influence in the world as a whole is tiny, you'll see from this report that as a council, we have made huge progress in the last two years. Alongside that, our strong leadership has encouraged communities and businesses throughout the district to follow our example and set their own targets. But we know we've got a lot left to do. We also know that we've got very limited resources, both in money terms and officer time. And that means in a year ahead, we need to make sure we make the most of those resources. When it comes to our city council targets, we have high levels of control, and our priorities can be very specific. However, this is not the case for our district targets. It's therefore just for those priorities, areas where we either do have some control or where we have significant influence. And we welcome the steer from the committee as to whether they agree with our priorities, and for them to let us know about a top ten debate. As Coastford has said, we'd also like the committee to discuss what formats the new climate emergency open forum should take. As we want to be an enabling council, we see this forum as a place where people and groups share information. This leads us to think that the panel could change depending on the subject, and being something more of a question time format, and I'd welcome members' thoughts on that. And I'm going to hand you, just to your Romans, will take you through your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Murphy, thank you, Chair. And I'm too very pleased to present this first review of the Carbon Neutrality Action Plan, and what has been achieved since the plan was first agreed in December 2019, and pretty much two years since the climate emergency declaration. The review covers inevitably the challenges from Covid-19, and some of the impacts and benefits that perhaps we've already touched on and we wish to retain. It covers the projects and actions that we've delivered. It also includes new carbon emissions data for both the council and the district. The resources that we've deployed, chiefly our expenditure, but also the monies that we've been able to secure from some of the external funding sources. The campaigns and collaborations that we've undertaken, and the delivery governance we've set up to help monitor and guide the programme. I'm not proposing to present a detailed overview of the review, we have the paper there, but I will write and draw out some relevant highlights. Firstly, the action plan sets about some delivery principles for councils against which there are a number of actions. An example of those has been included, including policy, engagements, incentives and investments. For example, our procurement strategy now has a requirement to have a minimum 10% weighting on sustainability when assessed and tenders. Carbon literacy training now completed for over 60 staff. And we have commenced a 12-month project run by the Centre for Sustainable Energy and WINE Act to engage our local communities, and so far, 28 parishes have responded to the baseline survey on activity. We've talked about crowdfunding to generate green futures funds being established on that platform to enable businesses and communities to access funding to support their carbon neutrality or sustainability projects. And we have secured just over half a million pounds for the installation of PBs and energy efficiency measures in the city offices, our depot at Marwell. And some of those, we are approaching as a test of pilot and learning projects, so that we can see which are the most effective straightforward over the length of the programme. The review does provide more detail on the work that has commenced, and we have reported some of those at the past policy committees over the past year as well. But, for example, we have installed EV charging points, new solar panels on the Winchester Sport and Leisure Park, funded securely for the base to target enabled energy efficiency works for homes with the lowest energy ratings and experience in fuel poverty. We've moved to a green energy tariff, we've launched a biodiversity action plan, and our local plan consultation placed climate emergency and sustainability at the heart of our development policies. In addition to the local plan, work has commenced to produce another report strategy, a green economic development strategy, that will set the framework for the transition of the district's economy towards zero carbon. In relation to engagement and activity, we held the first virtual sustainability conference, Roots to Carbon Neutrality, in October, and continue to support the Winchester Green Week in late September on the theme of doing more together. We've also set up new governance arrangements, including an external stakeholder group of key institutions, utility providers and representative agencies. At that meeting, we shared best practice, understand the initiatives that are coming forward, and it really starts to create a network across the district of people interested in this agenda. However, all that activity does need to have an impact, and we need to monitor that. And so over the last year, three new carbon emissions reports have been produced, two for the council, because we needed to catch up from the data that was provided in the first action plan, and one for the district. And the highlights are given in the report, and the full reports are available on our website. Some of the key messages from the council data is that we do have the right direction of travel for transport and energy, but focus must remain on these. There has been an increase in energy CO2 emissions with regard to the domestic heating, with that is with regard to a new development just large coming into scope. Also with transmission, sorry, with transport emissions, reporting has increased in scope to also now include employee commuting. For the district, it is noted that all sectors of the district must substantially reduce carbon emissions, and the most polluting areas are road vehicles, eating homes and commercial electricity consumption. And that the rate of CO2 reduction needs to be significantly increased. This data and this work gives us the focus for our programme ahead, and the need to concentrate on the largest sources of emissions, which remain transport, commercial energy and domestic energy, for both the city and for the city council and for the district. Under these themes, we have proposed 13 priorities for the coming year, and these have been drawn from the action plan that was approved in 2019 to ensure that our delivery bills on the programme are already provided. However, we do recognise the challenge and the need to build momentum, and so there are three areas of work where additional capacity will be directed. These are sustained transport, to develop proposals, coordinate and lead an key agency, and to be ready to bid for any government funding that might become available. Campaigns and communications to help promote more widely all that is being done, and encourage behaviour change. I think we all recognise a huge amount of effort is happening across the district, but perhaps not shouting loudly enough about that, and engaging people in that endeavour. And finally, a roadmap of quantified and timed interventions that are needed to achieve, in particular, the district target. We recognise that there is a challenge ahead, and we need to have a strong roadmap to quantify and give us the programme for the next 10 years. As already mentioned by Councillor Murphy, one of the key additions we'd also like to build for our engagement is to set up the Climate Emergency Open Forum, to open discussion, exchange ideas and create opportunity for two-way feedback. So the committee are asked to know the carbon neutrality programme review, to provide comment and feedback on the proposed priority action. provide comment and feedback on the proposed priority actions, ideally to look it down to 10, and comment on the proposals and format the establishment of the climate emergency open forum. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Susan. So it's a great introduction to the paper and it certainly sums up in many ways what has been achieved particularly during the difficult year, also the pandemic. So the work's been done, you know, we should forge a form for that. We're going to start with questions and then we're going to bring the debate. I know members of the committee like to start with a grand statement, but it may be better to ask the questions and then we can have the debate more fully after those questions. I'm sure there are many. Councillor Williams, I just wanted to applaud you because I didn't check whether you personally had any questions on the last paper. So if you have a question, please put your own hand up. You're still on speaker. Do we have our first question on this paper please? Oh councillor Rory, thank you for going first.
I said we could debate this one all night, couldn't we? And I just wanted to congratulate you both on a really good paper. It's obviously something I'm very close to and I'm working in a similar vein. And there's a huge challenge between your own carbon emissions and those of the district. But I just, I just wondered that from my quick reading of this and from my perspective, knowing the councillors I do, I think the big, three big challenges for you, even looking at your own carbon footprint, are the retrofit of your whole housing stock. I guess that's massive. Your two significant civic buildings, which I suspect we know that are not that well incited, so that is your second major challenge. The third for me is electrifying the fleet. So whether that's your refuse generators or it's your parking lot buses, certainly I had the privilege of riding on the first electric bus on this trial in Winchester, which was rather scary, driven by councillor Martin Todd. I'm still here to relate the tale and it was fantastic. But those buses, that one was brought down from London especially, they retail at half a million pounds each and even bringing them into the Hampshire network, it's not, we're not going to buy 10 or, you know, it's not. So just quantifying that from, not only from a carbon accounting, but from a financial accounting and how you're going to sort of square that sample, that is a big question.
I don't know whether Susan, you want to challenge that or maybe Mr Breslin might be able to try and assist.
I was going to pass some of it, Mr Breslin's way. But I think you're absolutely right councillor, and we've identified those three elements within the priorities. I think some of it is going to have to be done in partnership with the county council, with the providers, particularly around electrifying the fleet. But I think unless we start work on developing up the proposals, the feasibility, the cost etcetera, when the opportunity does present itself, we won't be ready. So I think if you can let me start that work now and seize the opportunity, be ready for it when it arrives. I think with the civic buildings, we do note that we have some work that's in motion at the moment around the West End and the Guildhall and will further develop those proposals. And we are looking at measures for the city offices itself. And I'm now going to hand over for the housing retrofits. Thank you Susan.
Yeah, with regard to the housing retrofit, there is a very significant investment already included within our housing retrofit account. We've set aside £15 million and we're spending £5.5 million a year on that work. I think our early estimates are probably about £200 million to retrofit the whole stock. Whilst that's a significant investment, it's way short of achieving carbon neutrality throughout the stock. The, I would echo what Susan said about the need to prepare ourselves for future funding rounds. And one of the experiences we found over this first year is we are really chasing ourselves at funding bits, the funding opportunities come up on extremely short deadlines. And I think one of them, Steve, you had the three or four days pair of bids that secured £200,000, but it wasn't a well-formed bid because you only had three days to compare. So one of the main aims over the next year is to commence work on, work in particular on buses is a great example where so much work is needed to prepare ourselves so that when the opportunity arises, we have a proposal to submit. The bid programmes do expect a well-formed proposal, well-worked out proposal. And one on buses in the last year, we simply weren't able to exploit in conjunction with Hamshe. Although I understand the bus back fence strategy will certainly have helped with that one.
And it's not the case, so Mr Breslin, that it's not only the timing of the bid, often it would be timeframe to spend the money and complete the project, which is the challenge. And not always to, you know, our partnership organisations to work at the same pace, you know, it's hard to get, you know, boots to work, you know.
Certainly that's other than from some of those early days that we did successfully securing, they asked such tight deadlines to get that work off the ground. So even if we are successful with the bid programme, the procurement, commissioning and installations have been really challenging. I think, to be fair to those organisations, they have allowed some flexibility with that. So for example, with the work to the city offices windows, which is being grant funded, we have been allowed an extension by six months. By six months, yes. So that will take us through and allow sufficient time to complete the works. But they are incredibly competitive.
Thank you. Yeah, I also welcome, I think we all agree, we have kind of one planet and we've got to look after it. I guess my question, best direct to both of you, is obviously when we hear that word climate emergency, it's really scary, isn't it? It's always, sometimes there's these knee-jerk reactions to, we must quickly do this, we must do that to fix the problem. As a new councillor, I guess this may be a question that you've had before, but do you have kind of an equation, councillor Work pointed it to as well, the cost of sometimes putting these things in, it's obviously there's a big number. Do you have an equation that you work to from the sense of the financial cost, the environmental impact and the long-term effect? Just comparing it to other technology, when you look at the Blu-ray player, everyone went, this is going to be a great invention. And all of a sudden, everyone went, no, let's go high definition. I guess there is a danger of spending billions of pounds on something. You know, we look at solar farms, you know, great idea and concept, let's put them over fields, but already test pilots and planes that run on hydrogen. So did you work with an equation that goes, actually, yes, it would be great to do this with our, with our commercial properties, but actually we could look at this an extra year down the line, which wouldn't have too much of a detrimental long-term effect on the planet?
I can't point to one equation that does that, but certainly that's the approach we've tried to adopt. So as an example, with the housing retrofit overall, we are focusing our early efforts on what you may consider to be quite basic works, but it's the works that would have the biggest impact. And so we are working on extra insulation of property rather than addressing the technologies such as the heat pump or solar panels. They don't have the biggest impact in the property, it's the insulation, it's factored as a fabric-first approach that does that. We will have the challenge of heating systems and what we do with heating systems in the future. And if we were to rush out now and do that, we wouldn't be able to. So it's important that we, we time the initiatives to exploit both grant funding and learning. So we are, we are working with other housing providers, as it is at Watford University, looking at what will be the replacement of the gas boiler intended to have and the charity is to have.
Can I just ask a question while we're on the council's own property? I know that Cheshwood Lodge has increased our carbon by a significant amount. That's relatively new building. And a question I have is, is given it's a relatively new building, when this was built, why did it not incorporate the carbon reduction measures? Why is it not that we were trying to get to as close to carbon neutral, carbon neutral as it was at that time?
It did surprise me when I saw the results and the impact that Cheshwood Lodge has had and then I thought that through. And what I suppose what we need to recognise is the, the impact of our housing schemes on, on the council's carbon footprint is on the, is on the emissions from communal areas in those schemes. So residential flats, that contributes to district emissions, but the communal areas are bits we control. And so that's what contributes towards the, the emissions of data that we see. But Cheshwood Lodge was built to very high energy efficiency standards. It was pre-carbon neutrality declarations, but it was built to very high energy efficiency standards, so it was very large-scale and thorough around the roots, a modern development system. Year one, we suspect that all the work had gone well. And so that, so when we saw those figures, we said, we need to, we need to get in there and just make sure the systems that are there are set. That's what I was going to say. But it will always be, compared to our other housing schemes, Cheshwood Lodge will always be the biggest carbon emitter because it's an excellent housing scheme with excellent communal space. The whole concept of the scheme was to provide wonderful communal space for residents to exploit that. So most of our shopping schemes don't have that sort, don't have anything like that. So it will always be, you know, with the measures that are installed, it will always risk quite high compared to other schemes. What we need to make sure is it's operating to its best emissions. And one of the measures we want to motivate this year is a review of our development system and whether there are additional measures we can sort of to bring those emissions up.
Thank you. Councillor Westford.
Voice of councillor.
Okay councillor Westford.
Thank you Chair. I'd like to address the larger side of the problem actually. So if we look at the carbon committed to the council, it's a powerful incentive to the district and the other side of the 90%. It's clear that as an organisation, we need to see council don't have control over that, they can influence what is going on on that side of the equation. As you said, 10 years to drive that down and we need to make significant step changes in that time. So we take on board the common term, the action around working with the largest businesses in the area. Equally, we're going to have to work with the quite significant housing stock across the district. My question is, would it be helpful to have some form of partner and strategy in place? Because solutions in those areas will involve third parties delivering those solutions. So have you thought about putting in place a fairly robust partner and strategy to support the solutions in each of those areas?
Thank you. I'll take the business one if I may, that's a long area that I work with in the economy side. So I think with the green economic development strategy that's coming forward, there's going to be more of a framework to enable us to generate that sort of partnership work with our business community around their energy consumptions, but also taking that further about their practices, the technologies they can develop. So there's, there's an untapped potential there, I think, that we can use the economic strategy to assist us with. I think we do have a number of business organisations and partnerships and there's a sustainable business network and there is, we're linking lots of different organisations. So I think it would be interesting to understand what role they can play rather than necessarily creating another sort of partnership that requires the same governance. But I think it's something that we should review and we're happy to look into what arrangements would be appropriate for that. I think on the housing stock, which you are going to comment on that as well, I think.
Well, I think that's probably councillor Westford's question, obviously, unless the council's own housing stock, the wider housing stock, generally.
Yes, I'm talking about the wider, yeah, district wide. And I'm not talking about partnering with businesses within the district, but I'm talking about partnering with organisations that can provide solutions, maybe energy companies, maybe businesses, maybe pick anywhere to be perfectly honest, that can provide the sorts of solutions, green solutions that we need to be able to drive the carbon footprint down across the entire district. Those are the sorts of partners. And maybe there is a role in the organisation for a specific partner manager within our organisation to manage that entire relationship with targets.
I mean, I think, I think you said, the initial carbon strategy didn't recognise the importance that we can't do this, we have to do this with our partners. And Susan did refer to the stakeholder group that's been established and representatives of major organisations in the district as well, as well as influencers and WINE Act as well. So we're working with, repeating, we're trying to develop those partnerships as we move forward, determining the most effective ones. I think it's probably one of the challenges for the years. But I think the points I make, we won't achieve anything district-wide, just to learn. It has to be that we're across the district and nationally. One that we have established and signed up to is the Net Zero Collective at St John's University, St John's University, Kilmarnock. But that's a sort of learning platform, but also where we can share expertise with other people and academics as well. So at the moment, you know, that's still at that research stage, it's what the best solution is.
Thank you. And obviously we've also had the Winchester movement strategy, which is a very close partnership with the council. Don't know what's going to be wrong there.
The movement strategy is, like I say, a joint strategy with the county council and the city council, they'll be, we are proposing to bring, to ask Andrew England, who was our representative on that programme, to attend the next meeting of this committee to, to update how transport, the role of our transport policies and how they contribute to this agenda. But the movement strategy is a key element of that. And how we can reduce the impact of emissions in the city, I think, is a major element of that strategy. So we'll see more information, the rest of our subjects are in the comments.
Do I just ask something? Just to help you there, because we're doing, having a conversation with the county, so it's like a pyramid, you know, so your district, you're doing a bit, county's overarching that and we're working with partners, with environmental agencies, some of the water, the energy providers, it's the only way and then in turn with government. So we're all doing it together, you're all joining up.
Thank you councillor Rory. You, councillor Pasing, is next with a question.
Well, Trish, I've got a question along with the paper, but I'm sorry, first question is how are we going to deal with it? Are we going to do it section by section or going to keep on with generic questions?
How many questions do you have councillor Pasing?
Well, okay, I'll do a starter. First one, I'm looking at page 30, the table on there as a starting point because elements of that are repeated all the way through the rest of the document. First one regarding transport, have the council, at any level, because I'm questioning city council rather than county, taken on the revolution on transport, i.e. the switch from diesel to petrol cars? Because only 10% of vehicles actually are electric now, according to Figg's published yesterday. Second point, has the council taken on board the increase in the number of delivery vehicles and what the impact of that is on carbon neutrality? The, and indeed the impact on carbon emissions. The energy saving, yes, congratulations on that. I'm afraid you missed the point, Miss Robbins, you missed out the gain we had when we closed River Park Leisure Centre. That was an incredible gain and yet it's not mentioned right away through this paper. Because it is something which is quality, yes, the new leisure centre is energy generous, but it's not a fraction of what we're gaining by closing your building there. And surely that should have been in this paper somewhere. I agree with what Trish said about the Cheshwood Lodge, so I'll ask a question about that. Are you taking on board the changes that developers have been encouraged to introduce regarding the quality of buildings that they're building for us? Because we have something, there is 49,000, 50,000 houses in this district. Because we have something, there is 49,000, 50,000 houses in this district, and only about 5,000 of those are county council, sorry, council houses. So linked with that is, we talk about the retrofitted Alab housing stock, which is movementally housing, a council housing, although you don't mention that in nineteen twelve, what other housing associations do it? Because they're also affordable and those people, because they have low income, will also need help. Are we working in partnership with them? I've not seen any sign of it, but actually doing it, I think.
Council Pearson, can I just ask you to...
As I said, what we're to do is, I've got a whole row of questions. Well, the other thing I'll say before I go on, one comment is, there's a mixture in this paper between what we have done, but you're saying we're still going to do it, we actually have already done it. And I'm just, I'm not giving ourselves credit because it's been done. There's a lot of visual stuff in there, which you know we've dodged, and less formal forum is not an answer to me. But now getting into debate.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Council Pearson, we'll deal, I think, with four then, and we'll deal with those and then...
Well, the transport changes is a good starting point, does that impact on carbon saving?
I think Susan has just put down, I saw her writing furiously, so Susan, do you want to start?
And retrofitted local housing, that's the key word.
And I will do my best to answer some of those, but I have got other colleagues who are also more versed in some of the details, and I'll make one on them. And with regard to the transport, I think we have recognised this is an area that we need to do more work and we need to understand more deeply, and which is why we suggested in here that that is an area of increased capacity for us and that we will look to have a sustainable transport officer, so that detailed work can be thoroughly looked into. So I think at this stage, I would say that we probably don't know the detail well enough as to the sorts of measures that you're talking about and the changes and the impacts. And that also leads on to the roadmap that I was talking about, that we need to have a better quantified set of interventions and that programme going forward, that build in all of those different externalities, there's a change in new technologies and policy, et cetera. So I think we recognise that that's a bit of work that we need to do. And with regard to the leisure park centre, I thought I'd mentioned it in the fact that we need to recognise the change, okay, but then my apologies, but there is some data delay in the fact that this is the data for the previous year, it's not for last year. So this year only goes up to March twenty, twenty. So I think there is always a bit of a lag between some of the data and what we're reporting on from a data perspective, opposed to what we deliver as projects, but we haven't yet quantified or it hasn't worked through into data yet. So it is a difficulty in us trying to express some of that data back and the impacts that's having with the project work that we're doing. So that's with the leisure park. We do recognise that there is going to be a change there and we need to look at that. Developer standards, this was talking about the new...
The new standards like REAN and REAN Plus, which we're developing, developers now introducing, along with plastic housing. We're not giving them credit for doing that, another big question, and I know they're being delayed by building regulations, which is a pain in the backside. But I would say, again, credit to us, the council houses we're building now are a higher standard than the former house we produced by the developers.
I think, I would agree that the industry can drive forward change more quickly than policy can at times, and that they respond to market demand and climate demand, you know, from a business point of view, occupiers expect high efficiency buildings and so to higher levels. And I think our local plan work will also bolster our development management processes around the level of sustainability and carbon reduction that we're requiring in future developments across the district. I can't say anything more on that at this time. But I think if I may comment, that there are, this is a report that we would happily discuss with you outside this forum to take on some of those detailed comments, if that would be helpful. Thank you.
There's one other crucial question I could ask, as they've three, five versus the plan.
So it will perhaps come back to that, if we may, I believe that Council Pearson, you were keen and hopeful to ask some questions.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Chair, sorry. So first off, I think we probably all in this group recognise that the climate emergency is probably one of the biggest challenges that we all face, you know, and the whole community faces. So actually, I'm really pleased to see that we are putting, you know, time and effort and energy into trying to develop this strategy. And I think, as I may see things here on the news as going, we are still in the early stages of trying to wrap our arms around this, it's a huge subject.
Two years?
Two years, two years is still quite early, so...
So, Council Pearson, can I ask you to turn up your microphone? We're getting some feedback. Council Pearson, can you turn up your microphone?
Of course.
Thank you.
So, you know, I really want to commend you on putting this paper forward, you know, it's always hard to put a paper forward when you know that people are going to criticise you, particularly on such a huge subject where you can't possibly know everything about everything. So congratulations on that. Like Council Westwood, I am more concerned, I'm reasonably confident in our ability to influence council source emissions here. It's still going to be challenging, but we kind of can wrap our arms around that. I'm much less so on achieving district aims. So in that regard, I note that the priorities are organised around transport and, you know, sources, the sources of emissions, and that's, you know, certainly a good first level of segmentation. I think there's another level of segmentation that might be useful, and I don't know if you've done this to the work, is looking at our ability to influence, who has the most ability to influence? Because some of the sources of emission, we're going to see progress made because of other factors. It might be, it might be government, central government policy, you know, the deadlines on selling petrol and diesel vehicles, that will help. There might be assumptions that could be made around the, just the key, people, you know, people making decisions, choices to go to being green in some of these categories. There will be, you know, and within each of these sorts of categories, there will be.
Thank you, Council Pearson, doing your job for the...
So the question, thank you for reminding me, the question was, what analysis has been done to segment those sources of emissions into those things that we can most influence, those that we can least influence, and those that are in between? Have we done that sort of work? And the second question, which is sort of related, is what specific KPIs are you proposing to introduce in order to manage and report on progress towards our targets? Thank you for the preceding point.
I'm near the end, I'll make a reminder for...
Thank you, Councilors. I think, Susan, you just touched on some of this, the roadmap and it's being taken into account, some of those externalities that I think Council Pearson is pointing to, but if you wanted to either try to address these questions or equally, you do have a colleague online, very keen to...
And I was thinking, so that we may want to respond as well.
Council Pearson, did you want to go first or would you like Susan to?
If I start with easy bit. We're well aware that the district emissions, you know, there are some we're responsible for, and per our annual report, we like us that for us. So we've asked for the next report that they do, that they try and change the way they do reports, so that will quantify some of those aspects for us. So we will have that for future use.
May I add to that on the spheres of influence? And we do have diagrams, we do have information around those different areas, and we have been looking at that, particularly around behaviour change, how the influence, so that's another area of what we really want to develop. But I don't think, and I'll check with the team, that we've actually done a matrix of, as you suggest, we've got the spheres of influence and the people and the activities, but I don't think we're going to go into that then with the carbon emissions, and I think that could be useful exercise for us to have over there. I don't think my colleagues do, thanks, Tony, I think.
Thank you for joining us.
Thanks, yeah, really just to mention the Wannat Report, which really helped, they're going to try and be much clearer in their future reports about, not just us, but who else can influence, the key things that they identify as the important steps to take. So that will also help us put some pressure on those others who might be influenced as well. The, Susan mentioned about the behaviour change work, they had a really, really good bit of work that County Council did a year or two ago, some in inside support around climate behaviour change, that I think will really help us, certainly in terms of how our behaviour change campaign we want to do, around levels of outside that are amongst people for different types of interventions, be it very low level stuff or, you know, up to moving from, for example, petrol to electric vehicle, which will really help us target and focus on that messaging to try and get the right people with the right kind of messaging and then serve these the roadmap to the work. I think that's something we really need to include as part of that, is that deeper analysis of where our influence actually starts and ends.
I just think, Council Pearson spoke about what KPIs we have to actually launch on progress.
Thank you. Well, certainly, the main KPIs are the carbon emissions and tracking that information and the trends over time for those different areas. We are also looking at more detailed work with the parish councils and mapping carbon emissions at much more local levels, so we have a deep understanding there. And each project has its own KPIs and its own outcomes with that. So I think that's where our internal governance comes in, we report to our property committee, and so we have internal reporting that we do around the overall programme, and so I'd say individual projects have KPIs that then feed up into that and report, I don't know if you want to...
The only thing I was going to add is, as I certainly mentioned, it's a piece of work that's happening at the moment with the Centre for Sustainable Energy around local communities, which will help identify their own parish carbon footprint and community carbon footprint. I'm not quite sure what that might lead to in terms of KPIs, but I think, for me, that's really interesting, exciting piece of work around trying to get, just take some sense of ownership and responsibility for some of these.
Is that all?
Yes, that's all, yeah. Around, some sense of ownership around the carbon footprint relates to their part of the district. And I think it's quite possible that some KPIs might develop out of that, which we can use to help us measure and gauge the extent to which we're engaging and then the extent to which that is actually making a difference. I'm not quite sure what that will look like yet, but I'm hoping that might emerge out that young piece of work.
Thank you. Steve, very good, Susan.
Yes, so we've got, my question to Councilor, can I ask a question as well?
Councilperson, I'm going to, let's move to transfers, I think you had an exchange there.
My question's really looking at this idea of the climate emergency open forum, and how we sort of feel that this might work, would we be looking at key specific areas of the sort of plants for the housing, you know, those kind of main things? And how would we sort of see, you know, the makeup of this? And then also something that kind of occurred to me, I was thinking of my question, which I think actually Council Warren might know the answer to, more to Hampshire, and I'm fairly certain that Hampshire has started to do things with climate emergency with parish councils, actually getting them to kind of come up with climate plans. And is that something, if that's being done at the parish council level, that really we should be making as a city, that we're doing that building upon building, that we're all kind of working together? So really, those are sort of my questions.
Thank you for the question on the open forum. I think we are looking at different agendas, don't want to be too prescriptive, because we also want this to be a two-way feedback, so actually from residents or the participants, it would be good to understand what they want to talk about, what they want to debate or what they want to challenge us on. So clearly, we will want to concentrate on those key themes of transport and energy and behaviour change, but the climate emergency forum also provides an opportunity to widen out the conversation a little bit. This is very much a carbon neutrality action plan with the supportive biodiversity and nature elements of that, but this could actually provide the opportunity for a wider conversation about some of those other areas of concern, areas of interest. So it's not actually defined, sort of set agenda, it might be that there's something topical that comes up that needs to be addressed at that time, so that today can take place, but another time it might be a more set programme because we have a reporting requirement. So I think it's going to be a mix and blend.
I'm actually really pleased to see the climate emergency forum, whatever you're going to call it, coming forward. I noticed from the engagement around the local plan, that is actually the piece around the common neutrality and climate emergency within the local plan, that got the most engagement. So we know that there is an appetite in the community to want to be involved in this journey with us and to also help us steer us in the things that they want to see done, because if they think it's coming from them, then they're more likely to sort of take action. So I'm really pleased to actually see this open forum coming forward. The issue I have around it is simply how you manage it. You know, there have been open forums which have been less successful than others, and getting the terms of reference right will be really, really important. I think, Council Williams, you're actually asking a question to Councilor...
Yes, I wanted to confirm that I was right about parish councils, because it was something in my mind that I remembered from being at various parish council meetings, and I wanted to check that that's how I was, whether it was that. And I suppose to sort of ask back, are we doing that work with parish councils as well? Because they are such a big part, we discovered on the previous, you know, sort of piece of the community and wellbeing, they're such a, they've got the connection and the networks across our district, are we working with them on this? Because it seems that Hampshire is, and we really need to be doing that, join us up.
Yes, so we are, and my question, the Greening Campaign is probably referring to, starting pieces of, but actually, several parishes have already joined up within Winchester District and via Winchester City Council, so I think you're controlling that, so sign up fee, promoting that, which is fantastic, so we are, and your offices meet with Hampshire offices and past that.
And so just with my town forum hat on, as opposed to my chair hat on, we often talk about engagement with parishes, but we must also ensure we don't miss the five on parish boards in town. So just to take on board, Steve?
Just right to that, excuse me, so I think the piece of work that we're doing this year, a piece of work around, and I keep referring to it as parish engagement, it's side of that, but actually the company, the work members developed the model, so they're actually reporting on all city council board as well, so I could be, you know, receipt of that information if you have, make sure you get that. Just going back to the county thing, absolutely, we've been supporting some parish Greening Campaign, but this wider bit of work that we're doing is probably going to be a more comprehensive way of us engaging with parishes, but we actually, we probably need to talk a little bit better and make sure we're not duplicating and sort of missing something about in between as well.
So I think, Councilor took a key, but thank you for waiting.
No, my pleasure, Chair. I'm going to avoid doing a speech, so Council Pearson is leading us newbies Australia on that. But it's just to say, I suppose, it's the foundation of assuring that in this room, regardless of political party, there seems to be a very unified approach to making this as effective a strategy and plan as possible, because it's something clearly we're passionate about, and that passion coming across from the officers too, so that is brilliant. My question, actually, a very quick point of information, I think, just to sort of both support Council Pearson and Miss Robbins is about the presence of commentary on RPLC in the report. I know at page forty-one, there's an LGL chart which advises the council commercial energy, we're partly in central blue, appears to be about almost half of the emissions that might come closely of our top ten sites. And then there's a box, and the whole page says, we're partly in central, because I was posing you the page with new leisure centre, that would inevitably be the assessment in terms of what would have set that impact. So it's implied that the energy is a significant benefit to them. The question is a bit more specific, a bit dull potentially, it's quite important, the community strategy is... The procurement strategy is referred to as paragraph two point two B and says we have a minimum ten percent weighting for environmental and social value. We're going to ask for a higher valuation now. So two points to the question. One is how much of that weighting is to environmental considerations and how much is social value? Social value more or less is different, I suppose, on climate emergency work here. So I'm kind of keen to know how much is very focused on environmental factors. And B, is that enough and should it be more? And how do we benchmark against other councils in relation to our procurement? If you really want to be serious about climate emergency, should we be, should we be going to as great an extent as possible from demanding from our suppliers that they, they think the highest possible standards in terms of environmental considerations? That's my question.
Thank you. With regard to the split of that 10% between the environmental and the social, we don't prescribe that. And that will be dependent on the type of contract being procured or the, oh sorry, the type of service or product etcetera that's being procured. And so we don't stipulate it. However, the procurement team are creating a guide for our officers to advise them on the sorts of sustainability criteria or considerations that should be included within that evaluation. I would have to refer to my procurement colleagues as to whether or not they benchmark that 10% with any other local authorities that are in the area or who are leaders in this area. So I'm sorry, I can't answer that, but I can come back to you on that. So I think that was the, I was wondering whether it should be more, yeah.
Thank you.
Just to add, I think one of the other important criteria for procurement processes is to consider, rather than evaluating a percentage in relation to social or environmental, the contract, is to make sure that written in detail is spec. So if we can actually require it as part of work, that's going to be far stronger than, as I think of it, saying in turn, and a vital potential source of that, it becomes more powerful by our factor than it is, it is congruent, congruent with the industry.
And I'm conscious of the time, so I do want to move into debate. And councillor Pearson, I'm conscious that you had this question, which was around climate diversity. And councillor Warwick, your hand has gone up. Is that the question or did you want to move into debate?
Quick question.
Okay.
Let me explain my question, shall I?
I know councillor Warwick, quick, quick.
Well, it is possible, it is in here.
Okay. Just go to councillor Warwick and come straight back to you. I've forgotten the large asker.
Quick question, might not have a quick answer. I just wondered if you could comment on Winnet's view that it would be not possible in present circumstances to achieve the council's target of carbon neutrality by 2013 and what your view is on that comment? Please, that's on page forty-four.
Thank you. I think we recognise that it is a very challenging and ambitious target. And I think we discussed the key measures that are going to be needed and the shift and change that is going to be required to meet that target. And I think it's about, as I say, going back to the roadmap and really understanding how we can move towards that. We have got key policies in development with the local plan, with the green technology development strategy. So I think they are giving us the evidence base to show us the areas we need to focus on. And so we work very closely with them and identifying where we need to concentrate and to create that shift. But yeah, I think it's a challenge and I think we try to reflect and acknowledge that within the report and the priorities that we've set out for the coming year.
Thank you councillor Warwick. I know that in the work plan, there was a report made to come to this policy committee around carbon offsetting. And I'm sure that there is going to be a need for us to do some carbon offsetting to get to zero carbon. But I don't think we ought to go into that now. We can go into that in detail when that report comes to us. Councillor Pearson, you have the floor with your question.
Yes, well, I'm looking at page six and really the question is about what is written on, so there's nothing wrong with what's on page six, but just where we're going with the, in lines of what councillor Warwick has said about the Winnet comments, which didn't surprise me, but did worry me. One of the things I've come across in planning is that we're talking about a link between biodiversity and planning and climate emergency. And it doesn't seem as though we're doing any training of those teams, you know, to get a real link as to how we can learn from the biodiversity team as an input to the planning concentration situation. Now, I'll give you an example from a recent planning application. We were looking at removal of a house in a big garden and then giving commission, which we did, for I think three or four respective bungalows, trentile sanctuary flats, they looked like, but two bungalows. And the biodiversity answer within the planning situation was bat boxes, hedgehog, water derricks for hedgehogs and removing the reptiles. That was it. I'm sorry, that is not it as far as biodiversity and the impact on planning, planning impact on biodiversity, which is required from DTRA for a minimum 10% gain of biodiversity on a development site. Now, the developer, what not the outfit, interesting conversation, he's going, oh, don't worry about the plants on the site, they're also consuming others and they planted there. And I've got to say, that was a unique bit of carbon offsetting, but it did not reanswer the requirement of biodiversity on that site. We don't want to wear offsetting as far as biodiversity is concerned. We try and improve the environment. So that is really what I'm saying is that this is an integral part of this, climate emergency and how the two are linked. And that's, I think, the requirement of training for expectations to get those two teams linked together. Now, what they do is find an offer as either two teams. It's just that they don't see the link yet. Mind you, a lot of people don't see the link. I'm a joke, but you've got background with biology, surface water, of course, obviously. So what are we doing about that side of it? Because if you remove vegetation, you impact on biodiversity, you're impacting on carbon production. Another one, well, there's black hole, what are we doing about black hole?
Thank you councillor.
No one of the fellows agree?
Thank you.
What other things?
Thank you for the question. I know it's on page fifty-three, there's details on council's governance and it talks about the carbon neutrality and communication group in that. And I just wanted, you know, I know that that group is there to group officers across the different departments to handle to address this whole issue, the carbon neutrality and the council's targets. I wondered if that was something where this issue could be raised.
Yeah, so it certainly can. Both of those teams are represented on that group. And I think it would be a bit unfair to say that they don't get the link. I think they do get the link, you've got some really passionate people in both of those teams. Diversity and the local plan is a current topic and there's dialogue between both of those teams together. Have you got it right yet? Of course, of course.
Well, to learn the difference.
Exactly, yeah, and I get that. In the work programme, we have got group one, the chairman referred to them, a schedule for the December meeting, which explores exactly, so it's an update on the biodiversity action and the link to the local plan. So that's, I think, they'll be far better basically in answer to your question, I think, at that meeting than we're able to as the people swing to be.
What I'm saying, chairman, basically, I don't see this as a high level document, it's a lot of detail. Really, some of this detail should be coming through in this document. Now, this is not a question we've got to respond to, it's sponsored government. What I'm talking about is what's not there.
Thank you councillor Pearson for those comments. Right, it is now hot state. I know there is at least one member of the committee who would like to get to their television at some place this evening. And when they say they've got the lounge going on somewhere. So can I please ask if we move into debate? Thank you for your questions. There's certainly been such nice quotes of them being useful for officers. Who, if anybody would like to stop the debate on this or maybe just to report? I think councillor can pick you, councillor Westwood, next.
Thank you. Yeah, it's just an observation on the district levels, which obviously was clearly a concern. We kind of mentioned about partnerships and engagement with the city. There's controllables that we can control, we can deal with those. I guess it's a food for thought of the confidence of the community element of it. You know, we often see change takes generations and generations need to get on board with that. You know, are we confident that all of a sudden we have a generation, which we seem to have, the younger generation of well, it's true, let's on board with the impact we're having on the environment and that's obviously working its way up as well, the conversations with relatives and pieces. And actually that effect in the district on the wider part of the carbon plan is actually, it will not look after itself, but the communities will play a massive part in that. And actually that number might come down a bit quicker than we expect because the things we can't control actually is as a, as a group of residents and as a community, we're actually affecting impact on that.
Thank you councillor for that comment. Councillor Westwood.
Thank you, chair, very quick because councillor can pick me to that question. My point was that we need to energise the conversation across the district and get people engaged in this programme to make it successful.
Thank you councillor Westwood. Would anybody else like to join the debate?
Oh, I think it's on a similar sort of vein and I think it is that thing and I'm hoping with something like we are having in a forum and it actually is a chance to engage and, you know, I know that councillor Murphy and I unsuccessfully due to Covid had tried to have a youth sort of parliament. And I do think that one of the things we really have to be seeking to do is to get young people involved and to move forward on things like that because they are the ones who are inheriting all of this. And I think that they're maybe some of those, you know, they groove or passionately about. And I think some of that change will start to come because I know councillor Pearson talked about the fact that people don't see the link, they don't see the link. And I discussed this with my husband Rob with things, you know, iron cars, people don't see the link that that's causing my asthma to be worse and it's damaging, you know, all of our lungs and the blues. People don't see it. And I think young people do see it, I think they get it much better than we do. And I think there is that thing that hopefully we are going to move forward, having other people involved and a wider audience that they can kind of engage, encourage and do. And I think the only way we can do it is by doing it together. You know, we are stronger together than we are on our own. And I think that that meeting is vital.
Thank you councillor Williams. And one of the things I certainly welcome to the board was the investment in communications officer around our whole climate emergency programme and making sure that we are doing the level of engagement that's needed. And see, would you like to come in more on that?
I mean, you say we should start today. So it's made, it's the first made of the future.
So we shall expect one of the best coming, coming on ready. And councillor to be careful.
Just to pick up on that, I suppose it would be very helpful at some point, not to put her under pressure, but to have some form of campaign plan. And identify what those campaigns are and how they go into further golfers' plan. Because I agree councillor, councillor Westwood, that it's absolutely imperative we take people with us. And I think the distinction, you know, for example, a single campaign around encouraging recycling would be really, really effective in trying to raise awareness, inform people about what sorts of things can be recycled, what services are available for recycling, you know, on the doorstep during the campaign, things that are made that I fire and that a lot of people raised questions around what can I can't recycle, where do I put these things for recycling? I think there's a, there's a bit of a gap there in information we provide to people. So campaigns like that, I think, can be really vital. So really good appointment, very certain point to pay.
Councillor to be careful, thank you for bringing up a point of recycling. And I know there's a comment in here, a very common about the circular economy, which isn't quite recycling, but having to spend a week's holiday in Wales where I needed a fundamental degree to open out a pantry to deal with my rubbish, because there were five bins and I needed to know exactly what could go in what bin. There's a difference between brown paper and white paper and felt paper, cuttle paper. So, but we are obviously, there's more we could do. And I think the environment bill is going to push the county, which will in turn push us to do more around recycling. And councillor Williams, is there?
Yeah, I mean, I do cross criticize a bit, yes, I do see helps, but unlike what is being done as far as our own property is concerned, that is something that the gains we've made are part of results, what we've done to Guildhall and what we've done by closing River Park. From now on, which it starts getting very, very difficult. Retrofitting our council homes is expensive and it's going to be more so as time goes on. Can't escape that fact. That's quite clear in the budget and it's quite clear for any of us who retrofit our own homes with insulation, with double glazing, with solar panels, we all know how expensive that is, more so when the council takes on board. Because the money's going to come from somewhere. This is where the roll of grants come in. I'm a little bit more worried when it comes to the district thing, their thing, as in the wrong word, is very much at the aspiration stage. Because we're not just talking about council property, which is relatively easy for us to talk about because it's our property. It is much, much more difficult when you're going along trying to re-educate people who live in their homes and re-educate them regarding the lifestyle and so on. And I've got to say, these, these comments from Centre for Sustainable Energy, my parish council greeted a lot of derision and glee because they were so wildly out of tune with what they understood was going on. Criticism about using, use of cars, for example, or the bus service. You don't have much choice to use a car for the bus service. That's just a simple example, why these documents are helpful and on the other hand won't be helpful at all. And I think we're all very much in this learning stage, I think you'll agree with that. It's joining up the different parts of what we're trying to do. Point about one between planning and biodiversity and many of you are therefore planning biodiversity to carbon gains and carbon captures and that link there. You then make out things like nitrate and dealing with that, we don't mention that here and yet that's an important part of what we're trying to do. Because if you, and yet you've got still within this document anaerobic digesters. Anaerobic digesters produce methane, which is a global warming gas. You've got to think about what you're going to do with that gas if you're going to produce it. The other situation, back to the question here, how many hectares of solar farms have we already got within the districts? Bearing in mind the district's farming area. I mean, I can think of a couple I've asked, but I've got two between Missus Wofford and Swallow. There's another one down in the southern parishes and these are big, the southern parish one is huge. And the opposition, we then come to, you talk about in here, wind farms. Every wind farm that's coming for the planning committee in this council has been turned down. For real reasons, it's a wonder that we've still got this in this document. It shouldn't be there because we're turning it down by that. Or we're going to say, hang on you guys, if you're really serious about alternative energy, you've got to think about that. I dare say, mention fusion power stations, one actually, one is being produced in Oxford. Bezos is financing one there, it's a prototype. Nonetheless, that's fusion, not vision. The difference already active. I could go on, that's what I said to you, I would like to go with this document page by page. That would take time.
Yeah, I think councillor, you know, Susan Williams is up. Yeah, I think, Councilor Pearson, Susan Murphy's object to sit down with you in a meeting.
Well, I would like to do that, I'd hope to do that, as Linda knows, I already supported it in a conference we had, the webinar conference.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Westwood.
So I'm glad to do this.
So I suggest that if, um, so, yes, please go through. Could I just turn up your mic? Because it's giving feedback. Could you please turn up your mic?
Yeah.
Because I need the feedback, thank you. I, I think that the issue around the energy generation, and that is in fact one of the things that we are asking to come back to this committee, and I think it's a thing that we're going to be looking at in December, if I might, if I might assert to you well. There is an issue and it's something I think that Councilor Murphy, that's been raised within the local plan, work that's going on, whether or not we should be potentially calling for science or energy generation science if we're serious about generating energy in the district. And I think the point, the points were made around what do we currently have, how many hectares we have currently, how much energy do they currently produce? And, you know, that would be worthwhile, but I don't know, Councilor Murphy, if you wanted to comment on that.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And we're going to be speaking to the planning team soon, discuss what could go into the local plan and the culture and renewable sites, but also possibly having a presumption in favour. Because at the moment, people who want to do wind farms or solar farms, they think they might have a big fight in their hands. So if there's a presumption in favour, it might encourage more people to come forward to this, that's something to think about and discuss. So, yeah, but we are going to be having the sort of sleepless team and I'm telling the local plan team, we'll be getting together and working on that to see what we can do. And we've also been talking about biodiversity as well, because I mean, that's, that is a key, key thing for me, it's one of my passions. So I know that Councilor, that Sue Crocker is passionate, she has been talking to the local plan team, and she has been talking to actually all the departments in the council to try and sort of get over some of that passion. And I think it's working and I think, you know, by the video on verge, you can tell that lots of presence in district, you're also passionate about biodiversity, it's becoming, it's definitely become one of the hot topics.
And thank you, Councilor Murphy. It is now quarter to nine. Is there any more debate? I have a few comments to sum up, but are we, are we, are we done with debate? Okay. Councilor Murphy, did you want to add any more before I give my comments?
I just quite like to touch on the session about twenty thirty targets and Winnac. They've been very supportive to us in our twenty thirty targets, because they've realised that it is ambitious, but, you know, it gives a sense of urgency. And if you set an ambitious target, you start working immediately, which is what we've done. Whereas if you set a target twenty fifty, you can afford to think, right, well, I'll wait a few years. So Winnac have been very supportive. But as we've covered this evening, there is a data lag in the data we've got and there's things we've done that haven't had an effect on the data we're getting. So this is very much to start thinking about the work we do in the coming year. Because, I mean, maybe we haven't been sort of blowing our trumpet well enough about what we've been doing in the last couple of years, and I take that one forward, because we've done a lot and some of it will come through in in next year's data. Well, we're expecting twenty one data in the next few months. And so a lot of that will come through in that. So this is really to sort of say what's next. And, you know, if you can give us a steal on that, whether you think we're going down the right path, that would be great. And I also think Councilor Williams mentioned the open forum and the governance that. And that is also where I think we would like it to be different from the usual open forums. And if you can come up with any good ideas, governance for that would be excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Murphy. I just wanted to thank officers for obviously the amount of work that has gone into producing this paper and also for the ongoing work that you're doing to groom forward, you know, our attempt to reach those carbon emissions targets for twenty twenty four, twenty thirty. And I think everybody here in this session, we have the questions that have been raised, recognised as those targets are ambitious, but it also shows determination on the part of the council that we are going to reach for those targets and to do all we can to influence others to make sure that they reach for those carbon retraction targets too. And I was pleased to see in the paper specifically, but I know that, but when I compared the hours commented before in a previous report, they couldn't sort of discern the distinct difference between the council's targets for the council and the district. And so I appreciate the clarity that's been brought to the fore by separating those two things out. And I also think that in terms of priority today, we focus in our discussions on the issue of end transport, we focus on commercial energy, we focus on domestic energy. So I think that should give you a good sense that given most of the areas that we have highlighted, that the priorities that you're setting out, you know, are in the right areas. I do also welcome the fact that we are going to be doing work on looking at a specific, I'm trying to think what it was called there, the roadmap, the look at the externalities. It would be interesting to, when that roadmap has been done, for us to actually sort of see this at some point and to understand how it is going to help us get to those end days, or at least let us know exactly what the gap is and what more we need to do. It is clear from looking at the district carbon emissions that we won't get anywhere close unless we were in close partnership and again, maintenance committee have raised that. I do congratulate officers on the success in gaining access to funding bids and also recognizing in this, that again, if we are going to be forward, we have to keep being successful in accessing government funding. There's been a lot of talk tonight also about joined up thinking around the whole climate emergency, major emergency. And it is true that, you know, we, we as the district council, we have to join up our thinking, but we also need the county council to have joined up thinking and indeed the government. We have a buzz back better strategy, but at the same time, within the county's budgets under such stress, that they're currently consulting on removing a consensual subsidy from their local services and local services. So there isn't always joined up thinking at a sort of a higher level of the district council. I think we've all commented on the open forum, I think it's a good idea. We want to make sure that there is that flow of ideas up and so it isn't people just come to listen, that they actually have the opportunity to input and to priorities. But again, all I can say is, you know, there's a huge amount of work to be done, there's a huge amount of work to be done and we look forward to hearing more what's happening. So, as it is now, I think it's quarter to nine. Again, I just wanted to thank everybody here this evening for your comments, for your debate, thank the officers who answered questions very fully, to thank Councilor Murphy and to also thank Councilor Claire for answering her questions and then sitting patiently through this section of this. I think if you rush, you may get some of the second half of the game. And our next meeting is on the 35th of September, we'll be looking at the core grants programme, the vision for a sustainable carbon licence feature winter start, and our transport policies and the way we do carbon reduction. So thank you all, I've called a meeting to a close. Thank you.